Good evening. It is Wednesday, October 18th. It is 6:09 PM. We're in the Nashua North High School Boardroom, and it's the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Ms. Oden, if you can take the roll call.
Uh.
There's only two of us. This could be easy.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Oden.
Ms. Johnson is here, and Ms. Oden, the alternate, is here.
And Mr. Donovan is here.
So we do have a quorum of the committee.
Thank you. The first order of business on the agenda is the CTE computer purchase. Donovan?
Yes. So, CTE program using their Perkins grant funding is requesting 40 units, 25 which will go to the business program. They have a computer lab there. And the other 15 of that 40 will be going to health sciences, construction, electrical, and education. So, spread out amongst those programs. These are more standard CPUs. Nothing -- this is sort of the same type of unit you'll find in most people's offices. And the models are -- the ones in the computer lab are 2014 models. So, nine-year-old computer, probably, yeah. That's not moving too fast these days. So that's the first part of the request. The second part of the request is for 19 machines for the Advanced Manufacturing Program, which is a program that we've, I think, talked about a number of times here. It started up, and then it was put on hold for a few years. Now it's back up and running. I think that's one of the programs has a lot of potential for our students as there's a lot of jobs in the Nashua area that would require these skills. So, they require, because they use much more sophisticated software or more powerful workstation. So that program would like 19 machines, but basically more of a high-level machine. So basically, the three quotes were received for each. The low on both was IT Insiders, which is a Nashua company down on Main Street. The price for the 40 machines is $630 per machine, and the price for the manufacturing, higher-end machines, are $1,0688 each.
Ms. Oden, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I'm just -- congratulations to them. Almost 10 years out of the computers they have. It's about time.
Yes, and this is good because, you know, especially with the Advanced Manufacturing Program, it gives our students a little bit more of opportunities. And that's what we need to do, is give them opportunities to -- out there in the world. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve the purchase of 19 HP Z2 computers for Advanced Manufacturing for a total of $32,072, funding to come from Perkins Grant.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then, I missed the one above it. Motion to approve the purchase of 40 HP ProDesk computers at a total of $25,200, funding to come from the Perkins Grant.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so that was fast and easy. The next one is the federal grant approval.
Yes. So, as you're well aware, we approve the operating budget each spring. And we, as part of our budgeting, we have the federal grants that we receive each year. The timing of these grants, when the operating budget's being approved, we don't know the amounts of these grants. These grants typically run from October 1st to September 30th. So we typically get our allocations in the summer. Since it's -- back a couple of years ago, City Hall suggested that we bring forward to the board each fall sort of a list of these grants and that the board take a look and approve them. So, I think last year was the second year I did it. This would be the third year. So, just running down what these grants are. There's the Title I grant. That's one of our large grants. As you can see, it's $4.67 million. That compared to last year is $78,000 higher. The Title II grant, which is mostly used for coaching and teacher PD, that's $763. That's $36,000 less than last year. The Title III grant, which deals with ELL and immigrant, that is $263, which is $69,000 higher this year. The Title IVA grant, which sort of links up with the Title II, but has a few other options, that's close to the same. It's about $13,000 higher than it was last year. The Title IVB, or the 21st Century, which is the after-school program, that's the one that went down significantly. Now, the reason that that happened, basically, we had two grants. We had one grant which dealt with five of the schools and one grant which dealt with two schools. Five-school grant ended. We got it back, but they gave us five individual grants at $80,000 each, which, when you multiply that, that is less than what the five-school grant combined used to be. In total, it's about $100,000 less. That was the one where we received the biggest drop in funding from one year to the next. The next one, which is the second-largest grant, the IDEAA grant for the special ed students, that's $130,000 higher than last year. Perkins Grant, which is for the CTE program, is $20,000 less. And the Adult Diploma/Education, so that's sort of for the adult students or older students, that's $50,000 less than it was last year. So in total, it were about $100,000 more than we were last year, but as I said, it's broken out amongst all those grants. So, for a motion, are there any questions about any of those grants?
Yes. The IDEAA, what is the percentage that the federal government pays us?
Top of my head, I don't know, but we spend at least $20 million. I think the number was around $23 million in the budget. So, 10-15%?
It was 10% to 15% of special ed?
Yes.
Weren't they supposed to, one time, fund it 100%?
That's what I heard, but that was a long time ago.
That's a long time ago. I guess they have the money to spend on other things other than our students, the need. It is not said derogatorily. It's the needy population that needs to help the most a lot of times because of their medical needs and other things. It's pretty sad. Okay, that's what I wanted to find out. 10% to 15%. Never even got up to 50%. Never even got up to 25%. At least, you know, give a little bit. They just take.
Well, the grant has been staying around the same amount each year, and obviously, the costs go up each year.
Well, that's it. I mean, it should -- the grant should go up with the cost of inflation, like the CPI index, you know? But it's really a sad thing. I guess I'll have to start calling Senator Jeanne Shaheen again. I thought she was more for this, hopefully. Ms. Oden, do you have any comments?
I have no questions.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve the FY '24 grants from the federal government.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and the next thing is the September 24 financial report.
Okay, so as usual, just run quickly through the monthly report that shows the month-by-month costs. That's typically the second one in your package. Obviously, it's early in the year. The first quarter is over, but at a school district, the first two months of the first quarter have a lot less expense because students aren't in school. So, we're about 17% spent on our budget, but like I said, that's a bit deceiving until we get further in the year. Just quickly, salaries and wages. The wages full-time, $6.9 million. Last year, when we had two bi-weekly pays and four weekly pays, that number was around $6.8 million. It's like $6.97 now. So, you would, with the increases in contracted rates, you'd expect that to go up. So that seems reasonable, and we'll be tracking that as we move forward. Wages part-time is much higher in September than the other two because a lot of our part-time people coded that way are teachers, and they just started getting paid by the end of September. Overtime seems fine. Wages seasonal decreased because the summer help is gone. So, pretty much what you'll see in that line going forward is any sort of temporary help. If somebody's out and we hire a temp, that usually happens with the ops group. Wages per diem is the subs that we pay, not the subs that the company ESS has. That's down below. I'll mention that in a minute. That's why that number's lower, much lower than it used to be. And additional hours, the 506-500 account, you can see that's much lower than the July and August. That's one of the few accounts that drops off because July and August has summer school. That's where the summer school hours go. Stipends at about $10,000. That's pretty much the head teachers and maybe a couple of other small ones. And retirement separation pay, I have to update my list. I did it through August. I have to update it through September. So next month, I can probably report back and sort of let you know if most of the teachers that have retired have actually received their severance. They need to come in with their first pension check to prove they've retired with the system to receive their check. So, that's why it takes typically the first three or four months for that to happen. Fringe benefits passed on through the city, so not much to say there. Next line, professional technical. There's legal. Staffing services, you see the $57,000. So those are the invoices we received from ESS, who provide the substitutes for most of our positions now. Hopefully, that number, that's one area you kind of want to go up a little bit, which says they're making progress on hiring subs. I have seen more people in the building coming in to meet with the ESS representative. So it looks like we're building more of a base. Hopefully, those people will actually show up and sub. Oh, but they seem, for the first time, to sort of be making a little bit of progress. So we'll see how the year goes. Other than that, the bottom line, their contracted services, that's typically where we are this time of year. And most of that is for the IT and ops. Flip over to page two. Property services, electric, heating, gas. That seems fine early in the year compared to where we were last year. Copier maintenance contracts, that's $75,000. That's about half of what we budgeted, and that's, we work with our vendor. We pay half the cost in September. We pay the other half in January, and then we, when it comes to June, the end of June, we figure it all out. So there's basically two estimates, and then we get actuals in June, pay a little more or get a little bit of a credit. Office repairs and maintenance, that's the laminator contract that we have for all the schools. And then there's a couple of plan ops items. Other services, telephones sort of online. There's a lot of other smaller accounts there. Transportation service, you'll see there, which is regular and on the next page, Sped. There's not much in the way of cost yet. First student invoices us each month, starting in September through June. So the September invoices are, in fact, in-house, but they got entered in the month of October, not in the month of September. Going forward, we should see at least -- we're basically always kind of one month behind, but hopefully, they keep up with the invoicing, and it'll just be one month behind. Tuition out of district, we're having our first meeting next week to go over this year's set of students and get a sense if the budget is going to be enough to pay for the students that we currently have. Most students with an out-of-district placement, there's a contract that I review, and then the secretary that works for Sped goes in. She keeps the spreadsheet, and she'll total everything up. So we'll get a sense. If there's potentially an issue in this account, we should know about it early on, and then we'll try to manage it. But like I said, we don't typically have a meeting in the summer because that's when all the contracts are coming in. So we'll have our first meeting, like I said, next week. Supplies and materials, educational supplies are high, but most of the -- a lot of those costs are obviously early in the year where teachers and administrators are buying their supplies for the school year. So you'll see that sort of tail off until maybe the end of the year. Other than that, the only other item which I didn't get a chance to look up, but down at the bottom, there's 61830 subscriptions. It's $120,000, so I'll have to figure out what that is. That's probably Amplify or one of our -- it's probably a pretty big number, so I don't -- but let me find out what it is, and I'll report on it next month. Indirect costs, that's our grants, the revenue that comes back. Computer equipment, not too much activity this month. You can see software, most of it was spent in July and August. Then the debt service, we have two leases, ones with the copiers. That was the one, the 105, that was paid last month in August. And then the 454 is the payment on the month we borrowed to improve the two high schools' energy savings. Next month, we'll have the representative, the engineer from EEI here to talk about, to show what the savings actually were. Keep in mind, we were guaranteed that we'd save as much as it cost us each year. The cost each year on borrowing the money to purchase all that equipment is $450,000. So, they need to prove to us that they've saved that much. So, I did have one meeting with him over the summer, and we've invited him, and Sean Smith, and he will be here next month to go over that, the details.
So what happens if what they said we would save, and it doesn't happen? What's the request?
They pay us back. So if we're supposed to save $400, and we only save $300, then they're supposed to pay us $100.
A difference?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the agreement. So, the one tricky thing about, and I'll let the expert tell you next week, but keep in mind, we put this in place based on estimates of running things the way we were running. COVID came, we changed the filters. So instead of having the seven or eight filter, we have like a 14 filter. Pushing the air through those filters takes more energy because you have to run the fans more. And we were also, at the same time, running the circulation process more frequently during COVID. So, don't quote these numbers, but let's say if you were doing it five times a day, we might have moved it up to eight times a day, something like that. So, some of the savings, we didn't necessarily accr on the bottom line, but we changed the way we were doing things. So, like I said, don't ask me too many questions on that. Next month, we'll have Sean and Mike Davey here to speak to that.
I guess probably, I understand that we're running them more, but you at least want to see the savings on the original, if you can calculate that out.
Yes, yes.
That's where you want to see. And then we have to take into consideration that we're running things a little bit differently, higher speeds, more air in-and-out take. So, okay, got it.
Yeah, and that was his task, to explain that because it was our base. Our base level was using a certain type of filter and running them so many times a day. We changed that. We put a thicker filter in, and we added more runs per day. So, he's got those calculations.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, perfect. Okay, now the next item is the transfer reports for September.
Okay, the first one is from Nashua High School North, where they're moving. It was an error on their budget. They budgeted it in the wrong line, so they're just putting it into the correct line. So that's really all that is. There's nothing more to it. The next one behind it is also $1,000, where they're taking it from equipment repair and putting it into supplies. Burmax is the vendor. Burmax is the cosmetology supply company. Hopefully, they don't need it. I don't know how much equipment you have in cosmetology. You'd have more supplies by far, I would think. The next one is the district-wide staffing. Now, that goes back to the ESS. This happened last year. We didn't change the budget when we budget this year, assuming ESS is still involved for next school year. We used to budget the subs in labor because we paid them. Now that we pay them through contracted services. So that's taking 950 of, I believe, which was $1,250 or so that we budgeted on the line for this. It's taking it out of the salary and putting it down so that we can pay the ESS invoices. You'll see it's broken into three categories. The first one is for the elementary, the second is for the middle, and the third is for the high school. So that's just an estimate I did based on last year. It could change a little, but this was just a way to get it in the right place. And this should cover the costs for the first seven or eight months. And then the one on the page behind it, there was a $150 error, an upload that didn't happen in the budget this year. So I went and fixed that for the school. It was Sunset Heights. And with the construction projects at Main Dunstable and Birch, we moved the programs, the special ed programs, out because that probably wasn't a good, all the noise and things going on. So we moved those programs. When we give budget dollars to the schools each year, we give them a little bit extra if they have those programs. So, the schools that got them, by Centennial and Sunset, said, "Well, shouldn't I get that money?" And I said, "Yes, you should." So, this was transferring. I basically gave $1,000 per program to the schools that now are housing the programs for this year, and they'll probably keep them next year, too. Little bit of equity for them. And the last one is a large entry. Basically, these are vacant positions, and if, on the back of it, it sort of lists what they are. But these are vacant positions that Special Education has not been able to hire. It doesn't look like they're going to be able to hire them. So we took those labor dollars out, and we put it into contracted services, and that's what we're using to pay for the contracted services for the -- this is all special ed-related staff. So the paras and the teachers or any other services that we provide. Now, this will cover things for a while, but the cost of getting these services outside is more expensive than inside, especially when you're comparing -- all you're seeing here is this is just their base salary. The benefits aren't included here, but that doesn't kind of count. So, this will get us some room. This will probably be, we'll see how this goes. We're putting a couple of things in place, but this is going to be one of the bigger challenges this year. And hopefully, it'll get better, but I don't know. We really, finding special ed staff is very difficult. There's obviously a shortage. It's a difficult job. So, we have to provide the services. So, you know, Mario, I think, working with the Special Ed Department has some ideas and plans, and so I can let them speak to that later. But as far as from a budget and dollars and cents point of view, it's gonna, it could potentially make the budget a lot tighter than it would have been if we continue to have to have a lot of these outside services. But at this point, I'm not worried, but based on the initial spend, we're spending a bunch of money early on on these services.
Questions or comments, Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I have one. You said Sunset and it's the other one who received special ed programs this year because of the renovations at Birch Hill and Main Dunstable. You said you might have to give them that money again next year. Does that mean that the project won't be finished by next year?
It's a two-year project.
Oh, okay.
So, this is the first year, and then the second year.
Okay.
So, I doubt they're going to move the programs back unless they finish that part of the building and they try to move them back. But I guess as you just move them out and then move them back at the end of the construction project.
Thank you.
No, it's strange because this year where I work, they're getting more applicants than they did last year to come back to work. So hopefully, people feeling more comfortable to come out and go back to work. So maybe we'll be able to start getting some special ed teachers, some, you know, some teachers to come back in the workforce.
Yeah, I mean, that's the hope. I think, based on what you're saying, you might, we're hoping maybe we get more paras, you know? But the reality with the special ed teachers is you need the certification. So it's, you could say, "Oh, there's a lot of openings. I want to do it," but--
Have that certification.
-- I think a few years to get there. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Again, what's the pay for paras at this point?
It depends how many years of experience you have.
Where do they start at?
I think it's around $16, $50 an hour or so. It goes up to the, somewhere in the 20s.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the FY '24 September transfer report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Couple of things, Ms. Donovan. I sent you an email requesting information about the Chromebooks again.
Yes, didn't I respond to that?
I think you just responded to the Joint Special School Building Committee. I'll have to go back and look at that.
No, I did respond. You had three questions to the Chromebooks.
Yep, okay, I'll go back.
Yeah, like what grades, six through 12? And, yeah, so there is, I did send you an email. If you didn't get it somehow, if I--
Okay.
I took your email, I put responses in it--
Okay.
-- and then I sent it back to you, but--
Okay, I'll take a look again because I'm going between two emails. It's going to the EDU plus my personal email because I can't get to that email online because I can't get back into that account. Everything is, like I said, goes before, I have to read things on the phone and the iPad, and it doesn't work. So when I get home, I'll go back into my email. See, I can't do that. I'll have to go into my phone. If I find it, send it to my personal email. It's a nightmare.
Well, if it's not there, let me know, and just--
I shall.
-- I'll send it to.